Call the select board meeting for July 28 to order at 7:00 PM. Chief Goyette, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got a square one over here, too.
Got square wheels.
Anyone want to make a motion for the agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda for the select board for July 28, 2025.
Second.
I have a second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
I do.
Go for it.
8:40, we have the recreation department's staffing discussion, and at 8:40, we have the manager's report.
We'll do the manager's report at 8:41.
That's going to be a short one.
Immediately after the recreation staffing discussion, as we know, times are only best guesses anyways. One other thing, the policy letter that was included in our packet is not on this agenda. Or if it is, I didn't see it. So do we want to...
Review an adoption of the driveway approach policy at 8:15, is that the one?
That's the only one I had.
Yes, so I just can't read. Okay.
You can put it 8:41.
We'll do it at 8:15. Sequence in my packet, but I can fix that. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the select board for July 14, 2025.
I'll second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mary Lee.
On page two, the paragraph, it says before they hit, or it should be if, before it hits, right there at the bottom, the last sentence. It's not a they, it's an if.
I'm sorry, Mary, I didn't catch which paragraph you're talking about.
First one.
On the top.
First one, I thought you said the last.
Fifth line down.
Because it's an if, it's not a, it's not a they.
Before it hits, talking about a storm.
It hits.
Past tense.
And then, under West Chris, South Eden, stormwater projection, reef is spelled incorrect. Last line.
Beef discussion?
Yeah, the beef discussion.
Anything else?
No, that's all I've got.
Under Green Mountain Church, second line down, and speaking with the state V-Trans, maybe I should just say, and speaking with V-Trans?
Yes, sir.
Is all ADA-driven for the sidewalk with pitch and grade driven? I don't think that driven needs to be there. Can just say it is ADA-driven for the sidewalk with pitch and grade.
Yes, that's redundant.
And then Jay Davidson got a quote from Pike, did he get a quote from Pike or from Wilk?
Wilk.
Yep.
That's all I've got.
Mark, anything?
Nope.
There's potential correction on page three, select where comments or concerns at the bottom of the page. Mark Brown stated that the state pays over a million dollars to UVM. I think it's the other way around, isn't it? UVM pays the state?
UVM pays to the city of Burlington.
The city of Burlington. So it stated that, so it states that UVM pays over a million dollars to the city of Burlington.
Correct.
I knew that didn't sound right when I read that.
On page...
Last paragraph on page three.
Three, right down.
So...
First line.
Okay, so we're all clear on that, so that's all I had. Anything else? All in favor of approving the minutes for July 14?
Aye.
Aye.
Would make a motion to approve the minute for July 21, 2025.
Second.
Moved in second, it, any discussion?
Yes. Under UDR, discussion approval. They were going, not going, is true. They're true set under UDR.
I think we just need to get rid of that first going.
They were not going to be.
I'm not sure where you are.
First line at the very end, they were going, not going to be approving the UDR but accepting public comment.
Okay.
I think you just get rid of that first going.
Yeah.
Maybe it will make sense. I don't have anything else.
That was all that I had as well.
Any more discussion on these minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens' comments, items not on the agenda. Do we have anything?
You're on the agenda next.
Okay.
Anybody on Zoom, Mike?
Just the highway foreman and Allison.
So we're going to move on. Green Mountain Church of Christ stormwater issue.
Jeff is on if you want.
Let's let Jeff kick this off. Jeff, what have you learned about this?
Nothing further than the last time we spoke.
Considering we have people in the room that weren't here the last time, I just wondered if you could give us a brief status report, where we were last time, last meeting.
Last meeting, based on my talks with the state, no work is done outside of the right-of-way when there are infrastructure improvements such as sidewalks and pavement.
So we are also agreed that the sidewalk is a couple inches higher in elevation than the original, that original part of the area was before the sidewalk was built, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So consequently, there could be water ponding behind the sidewalk that wasn't ponding prior to the sidewalk being built? I'm not saying there is, I'm saying there could be.
Yes, I mean, it's possible. The elevations on the drawings, there are some places they're lower, some places they're significantly higher. You know, as I mentioned, it's all ADA standards.
Yeah, and when I looked at that drawing, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't recall the exact number, but it was two or three inches higher at that driveway, based on the drawings, is that correct?
Correct, it was a little over three inches on the east side, and it was actually lower on the west side of the driveway.
So where do we go from here? You've got a bid, you got a bid from Wilks to pave part of that driveway or all of it? I don't remember what you told me now.
It's back to basically the building, so where it switches over to gravel. So that, the paving alone, we have a quote for, and then we would just need the site work, as if it would be another factor.
So what was the bid for the paving?
Around $14,000.
And it would not be successful to just put aprons near the sidewalk? It would have to be paved back to the building?
The whole, kind of, the whole driveway needs work. I mean, it's, elevations are all over the place. So I don't know what it was like before the sidewalks were put in, you know, based on what I've talked to the state, and it's unrealistic for the state to fix or a town to fix everything past the right-of-way that changes due to an infrastructure improvement.
And how far north of the sidewalk is the right-of-way?
That's actually the state's right-of-way, so it's almost approximately to the end of that island. Mark, you know what I'm talking about?
I do, yep.
Okay, so it's just a little bit in from that towards the 4A side.
So 20% of the total paving? Roughly?
Oh, if it had to be all repaved?
Under the quote that you had.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it'd be a fraction of that.
Okay. And the state doesn't participate in anything like that?
No, not past the right-of-way.
Okay.
They hold their guns on the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So once again, where do we go from here? Welcome, any comment you have at this point.
I have a couple of questions for you, too. So when was, when was it last paved?
It has not been paved since the state created the Quagmire that they've created.
No, your property.
We have not paved it since we owned it.
So you have no idea how old the pavement is?
That pavement has been there for years.
19...
Tim Smith owned the property prior to us.
So probably 1980?
Probably earlier.
Jeff, I have a question for you, what's the anticipated life of pavement?
Roads are 10 to 12 years. You know, that's, that's depending on the volume of traffic, you know, are they, are they being crack sealed, are they being sealed? So it's really a maintenance thing, if they're not being taken care of, we see them breaking down faster and needing to be replaced. As with anything, if you give it, you know, the maintenance that it needs, you'll get more life out of it.
So before we go there, I see where you're going already, with how long it's been there, and is it just age that is causing this disruption?
No, that's not at all what I'm suggesting.
It was fine before the sidewalk went in, perfectly fine. No water puddles, no breaking up of the tarring area. And once the sidewalk went in and it started to pool and then freeze in the wintertime, any little cracks or between where the sidewalk was and that driveway started, water's been under it, and now it's been breaking it up over the last two winters. And so now it's just all broken up, and there's ruts everywhere, huge ruts. So we didn't change anything, and we're not expecting Wilk to do our whole driveway, but the portion of it that is now affected since the sidewalks went in, we feel it's not our ownership, and we're willing, if we tried to reach out to Wilk Paving and they're not calling us back, to determine how much it would be beyond that apron of the right-of-way to go back to make sure that everything is going to flow properly. But unless they call us back, we can't get that number either.
Well, that's what Jeff, the highway superintendent, has.
But did he go back to...
All the way to the building. To the building.
To the end of the building or the beginning?
To the front. To the front, that if they were to pave...
$14,000 is to the front of the building.
Pardon me?
The $14,000 is to the front of the building.
Yeah.
Yep. The feeling is if, if, so the puddles extend about how far towards your building from the sidewalk?
It's not towards the building, it's, I mean, the building is here.
North.
And the sidewalk and the tarring area is here, so it's not...
How many feet away from the sidewalk does the water pool?
12 feet.
Pardon me?
Ten to 12.
Ten to 12 feet.
It extends in 12.
Correct, yep. And your pavement has deteriorated beyond that?
No.
It's just that 10 to 12 feet?
Yes, wherever the pavement was is now all deteriorated, and when we measured it out, and Mike's been there several times with the state and local people, and we've done multiple measurements, where that tar now ends is where it's been broken, and that's all we're asking, is that portion that was there and was in place and was in puddling to be replaced.
So the issue is, if they pave that, there's no guarantee that that's going to stay in place, that Wilks doesn't want to do that because they don't think it's going to last?
If they tear up what's there and put a new one down, and we continue it further back?
If you continue it further back, it will last.
If he calls us back and gives us the number, perhaps we could do that. If you have any weight into getting that quote call returned, it would be very helpful.
Sounds like there's some middle ground here if we can figure out how to get there, right?
I think Jeff has that number. You know, the papers are typically, I'm not saying it's right, but this time of year they're super busy, and they don't call somebody back that has a small job. You know, they call Jeff back.
I can make that, I can make that meeting happen.
Yeah, Jeff can do it.
Because it was part of, it's a small project, but it's part of the larger project, the first time we were here talking about it, and somebody from Wilk was here and given the contract to do the roads, we were hoping that the discussion that night was maybe while they were doing the roads, they could do that small piece.
So let me ask you this, if, let's just say the project that they want to pave is, this is not the right number, but just for simple math, let's just say it was 100 square feet of pavement. How much of that are you looking for from the town? The distance up the right-of-way?
Yes.
Can I say something before you get down that road? Part of the reason why the pavement has fallen apart is the contractor that installed that pavement originally never sealed the joint from the existing asphalt to the new, and the water got underneath there because he failed to do his job. And then, over time, because of the ponding of the water against the sidewalk, which Mike and I talked about this before the pavement even got put down and under the original contract about the sidewalk being problematic, and I spoke to the state engineer about the fact that the grades were incorrect, and it was just completely ignored. So this process has been faux pas from the beginning, because it was A, engineered improperly, B, it was not checked for grade, and when we talked to the people that were engaged in that, it never got corrected nor was any follow-up ever made.
Well, that's what we're trying to do tonight.
Yes, so what I'm trying to establish with you is, the road foreman measured, there is a cut that runs on the west side by the door that was made to run a conduit out, and his estimate goes from that cut in the pavement all the way across to the east side of the pavement and then all the way back to the corner of the building. And so I'm not sure why that estimate was that way unless that was the contractor saying that that needed to happen in order to protect his work, which I would agree, it needs to be done, but it wouldn't have needed to be done if they left the pavement alone. So, and I know that they wanted to put the sidewalk in, but when they changed the grade, it eliminated the ability for that whole space to drain properly.
Well, let me ask you this, so if the bid that Jeff has, the town road foreman, if the bid he has from Pike would solve the problem, and...
Wilk.
Pardon me?
Wilk paving.
Not Pike, Wilk. Oh, I'm sorry. If, if the paving bid that Jeff Davidson has would solve the problem, and the town paid for the part of the paving that's in the right-of-way, would that be an acceptable compromise?
Well, according to the town road foreman, we were responsible, we would be responsible or somebody has to be responsible for that excavation, the removal of all the broken asphalt that's going to come out of there, and I don't think that that's our responsibility, because this whole situation could have been fixed from the beginning, so I'm not so sure that I would agree with that. Because it should have been fixed way back at the beginning instead of allowing it to just carry on the way it's been going on.
Is that part of the estimate, to remove what's there?
No.
I don't think so. Well, I mean, to pave the portion that's in the right-of-way, we're going to have to take out what's there, I mean, materials is what's there, and that, I don't think that's involved in Wilk's estimate.
Would we be able to do that?
That little, that little piece right there, I mean, can we do it? Fitting it into, into our project schedule will be the challenge, but...
Gotcha.
But we also can't, we can't discharge water from private property into the state's right-of-way. So if we, whatever we do for a resolution, if that water goes into the state's right-of-way and causes a problem, they're going to come after us to, to fix it, because there's a law, there's statute, says you can't discharge stormwater into the state's right-of-way. Even though there's a drain there and for years and years it went over that sidewalk, doesn't matter. They're, they're not going to honor and say, oh, we were wrong 20 years ago, so we're going to be wrong today. And the way those pitch, those grades were, we had engineer come in there. To make that sidewalk, now do this, and every driveway, you had to come down to the level it was at, pre, you know, at the time the sidewalks went in, you couldn't do it, because the thing would be up and down, up and down, because everybody's driveway is at different heights, so that's why the ADA compliance is that they, they, they shoot those grades for that, those distances of that sidewalk, and they change the grade and say, anything outside of the right-of-way is the properties, is the responsibility of the property owner to bring their driveway or access back to the level of the sidewalk. I mean, we can go to the end, if the sidewalk's not at the back end of the, of the right-of-way, then usually they, they pave it or, if it's gravel, they put gravel in, whatever, they try to match what's there for materials, but once it goes out of the right-of-way, it's not, that's the state's policy, and we're trying to mimic the state because that's been vetted through lawyers and everything else. So that's, that's what is on our agenda tonight, too, to talk about, is going forward, how we handle that, because everybody's driveway is at different levels and somebody's going to complain that they had to put more gravel in or they had to put some more pavement in. But once it goes out of the right-of-way, that's the, that's what we're saying, it's the property owner's responsibility, because it's an infrastructure upgrade, that you have to bring your stuff up or down or whatever to the level of what the sidewalk is, or the edge of the right-of-way, where your property meets the right-of-way.
So the area we're talking about is part of the right-of-way?
Correct, that...
We measured it.
Yep, no, I don't disagree with that. It's probably, I think you said 10, 12 feet, I would agree with that, it's probably from the edge of the, the north side of the sidewalk to the edge of the state's right-of-way is probably 10 to 12 feet, maybe even more, I don't...
Yeah, the thing that, I guess I'd challenge the comment about the Americans with Disabilities Act is because, you know, every time you go through Rutland, you know, the sidewalks are at all different elevations around the city, and they have wheelchair accessible access from the sidewalk to the curb, and they have a standard for that, not a requirement for the entire sidewalk to meet the slope, because that would be exceeding far outside what the Americans with Disabilities Act requires. And the reason I know that is I used to work for the state, and I wrote a public comment on the Americans with Disabilities Act. So that's not true, but they have to worry about it going up and down, because they'll only have to meet the wheelchair requirement to get from elevation to elevation.
Oh, excuse me for a minute, we're not here to discuss whether this...
No, I'm just saying that...
No, let me speak, let me speak. We're not here to discuss how the sidewalk was put in or anything else, that doesn't, that's, that's happened, that's done. So let's move on to how are we going to resolve this? And I think the scenario we're heading to is that we're going to figure out what it costs to pave the entire, you know, the entire parking lot, and then we'll figure out what percentage of that the town should cover and what percentage you should cover, and then we'll see if that's a viable solution. We can talk about what happened and who did what all day long, and we'll never resolve this until we come up with a course of action. So can we agree on that?
Yes, and I think the only reason it was brought up, the comment after was because someone brought it up on your panel.
No, I understand that, but that's not why we're here, and I need to, I need to keep this, this meeting moving, so...
We would love to have it moving, but it's been a few years.
So let's, so I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to keep things moving, so let's, so Jeff, you have a bid from Wilks to pave the majority of that lot, correct?
Correct.
So all we need now is to figure out what it's going to cost to do the prep work, correct?
Correct.
So let's do that, and then we'll figure out who, what percentage is in the right-of-way and what percentage is not, and then we'll talk. Is that reasonable?
And who will get in touch with us so we know who the point person is?
Instead of putting another person to the mix, I would just have, Jeff has, I think in emails, has everybody's email addresses, so have Jeff reach out to schedule a meeting with Wilks and get him there again.
You got that, Jeff?
Yes, sir, not a problem.
If you could make sure he has our email, because we'd like to be there when Wilk comes, just so we can have that conversation as well, as to the possibility of extending it.
Keep me in the loop, too, Jeff, whether I show up or one of the other board members, someone from the board should be there as well.
Okay, you got it.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
And all we can do is move forward, we can't undo...
It's a play we haven't had yet, so it's good.
Yeah, so it's a start. And then, you know, once we get some numbers, then we'll have a conversation on how we're going to figure out, you know, who does what and all that. Okay?
Sounds good.
Anything else on this topic?
Thank you for your time.
You're most welcome.
I believe, too, we're going to have to, Jeff, we're going to have to talk to the state about, we might have to get an 1111 permit to work in the right-of-way.
Oh, yeah, we definitely will.
So will someone from the state approve this work?
No, they'll approve what's working in the right-of-way and making sure that it meets the criteria, but...
This is perfect, so you know, because it's not going to be the other person that was working before.
Okay, okay, yep, thank you.
They'll approve the criteria, so when it's all done, we don't have an issue where they go, no, that's not going to work.
Correct, like they did up here on 30 when we did the sewer project.
Yep, okay.
I asked to make sure they were there to make sure it was, to address any issues before, 10 years from now, they say, you got to hear Route 30 up again because you were right.
Yeah, that's the best 200 yards of Route 30 there is.
Police Department update is next.
Good evening.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Chief. So I want to hand these out to you there, I was trying to put these together, we'll talk about that after the meeting. That's the right, who's the right-of-way back there?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, there's a lady, how are you?
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Couple things, it's worth it to get rid of.
Let's talk about the calls in June. So we actually, we had the same, almost the same total, I think we was up by one, we had one less than in May, we had 736 versus 770. You know, the biggest thing that stands out in June, we did more foot patrols, we had 36 mental health issues, that's averaging more than one a day.
It's getting worse and worse every month, huh?
So then you have, we have 23 in May, so, you know, we jumped up quite a bit, very time consuming.
You're averaging about 10% more calls this year than you did last year.
Yes. Any questions on those unservice calls at all? We were down on traffic stops big time, but we had other things we were doing, we had people on vacation. For the rest, we had, I think we had 12 in June, up five. If you look at what they were, we had this only, I had two aggravated assault encounters, three simple assaults, which all stemmed from the mental health, 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 I believe. We had two warrants, same amount. Any questions on those? Okay, traffic violations, we were down, we didn't make much stops. Okay, traffic violations, we were down, we didn't make much stops, 69 total violations, that's about a day. Calls to service in June. We're leaving out, there's people there, actually, they've had a very busy summer, they have a short game coming this weekend, it's on Saturday. There were a lot of people, we had injuries from, uh, we were down for about four weeks, two days a week, local, personal. Backups, backups were increased, defined and blown, for varying, run west of, which was the, which was the war war. Remember, remember when Bob asked, yeah, I don't think I've been back to you, but a lot of people, to wipe them, that's how we took time. And that's when we had two people that were out, doors, that's a place to be by yourself.
No, no.
And it's easier going that way than going through West Avenue.
Almost inaccessible from West Avenue.
It's like a class four lane, so that's what happens. In, backup divided. So we had, that was good, state police three, for July, that's pretty good. So going on to the notes that we talked about, that Justin put in for the report. Like I said, we talked about the steady, you know, we had one less than May. We talked about the comparison to last year, to this year, and we see the difference, how much we've increased over those times. I mean, this summer has just been absolutely nuts. We're getting, right now, there's a contingent of homeless that are renting, and bottom of the half moon, they have thefts up against us over there. People that are, you know, living, homeless. We see a lot of times to bring down, you know, but they just try to go different locations and standard cars. Not easy. In the summertime, the vouchers change for hotels, so they let them all loose, but wintertime, that's when they get the vouchers. Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda a strange thing. We talked about the radar cars, so we do got the one mounted on Blissville, has anybody seen that?
I have.
We do have the two radar carts out, one on Main Street and one on State Road to satisfy the people that talk about the rodeo traffic. We're waiting on Jeff to get some more posts, so that we can put the other carts up, the solar-powered ones.
So you have two more in your possession, and you've had two more ordered, is that correct?
Yeah.
So a total of four more.
Now that we can get up, and then hopefully no one will mess with them. And I don't know how the traffic's been, Mark, on Blissville, if anybody pays attention, I imagine going out, they don't see it, it's coming in. We talked about what direction where we wanted to put it, you know, and, you know, we had a little one side, you know, some people don't want it in their area, so... Not their area, but their yard and stuff, so it's, it can be, it can be a real sensitive issue.
I think you put it in a great area, and, you know, I don't have any evidence, but anecdotally, I think traffic slowed down substantially. You know, people, most of the fast vehicles are people that are coming north. You know, when you, you're in a very rural area, and you come down a hill, and there's a big straightaway, and I think it's absolutely slowed people down.
Yeah, so we're gonna hit one on Creek, put one on East Hopperdine.
Talked about North Road at one time.
Yes, yes, I'm glad you're willing to, this is one more.
I hate to admit this, but I've caught myself speeding going down the hill by Egan's more than once.
Everybody does. I mean, but we're not writing for just 10, I mean, they're going 15, 20, sometimes 20.
That's good to know.
Doesn't mean we'll stop you, it's no good to get on 30, you know?
Especially if you're a frequent flyer. Bob McAtter, you had a comment?
Yeah, Village, but I think that sign is already, as they're coming into the village.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that where you plan on, are you planning on putting a permanent one there?
Yes.
So we're getting, we got a total of four more coming, Bob, with the permanent on posts, so...
It'll be, it'll be all over. We talked about the grant that he put in for the DOG grant, for the cops grant, was submitted, and they'll hear something by the end of September. Passive grant BLTC that Justin tells for all of us, tells you what everybody got. Did everybody get everything? Did you get all your stuff?
I'm not sure. I know that box right there is the new scope basket. The chains on equipment, I'm not sure if that's my...
And then we had the bike rodeo, which we had talked about, I don't know if we talked about it already, we had that bike rodeo. It was a while ago, but I don't know if we actually did bring it up.
I don't think so.
Oh, we did. So, Friends of Iraq, I love the Friends of Iraq, I gotta get them to know them between 4th and July. Is, we had a good turnout, what did we have total?
There were 50 kids.
I was gonna say, Dad, it was like 30.
And it was nice to see most of them were attended by two parents, and sometimes some grandparents. So, you know, it was a heartwarming event to see local families turn out for a kid's activity. It was great, the chief was there, was a starter in the slow race.
That was pretty good, because the kids had a ball, even some of the parents competed, it was...
He had three other officers there, and to see everybody interacting with, to see the public interact with the police department, not under an adversarial situation, you know, to, in a friendly situation, it was just fantastic.
Yeah, I would say most of the kids, we knew them anyways, being in schools, parents would have noticed, not definitely most of the kids did.
And the police department gave out helmets and some lights and bike locks to kids. It was, it was a really, really great event.
Yeah, the fire department, the ladder truck. Who went up there? Who was on the ladder?
A couple of guys, but I think it was Justin.
Yes, Justin went up there a little bit.
He wouldn't go all the way, he got, he says, okay, that's enough, and I heard he's all...
And Justin got first response to come over with an ambulance, so the kids could tour that and see it, it was, you know...
I think that's a yearly thing, I think that's, as long as we can maintain, I think that's a good thing. Fourth of July, we had talked about that, and I hadn't even sent anyone, so I would thank everybody, got that one really well. We had food carts up in the zoo, we had, we did have three bikers next year, I'm gonna try to get the whole band there. I thought that was good, and we actually had an honor, the regional, honor bar for the region. And then the library, had everything there, doing well there, the ops, doors, the van. I don't think there's any hitches. And then, of course, the one negative about the, since Rutland didn't have any fireworks, Route 30 was a traffic hazard for the fireworks, by David Park. Almost, pretty close, either right on it or past, locked up on the road, both sides. There's no way you can comb out the bridge area, that's the most people I've seen phone that thing since I've been here. It was great, it was filled up by the time I showed up, 6:30.
I heard the crossroad, I heard Fro Bridge was down the one lane where they were parking crossroad bridges to watch. Across the bridge was down the one lane where they had one lane blocked out to watch it.
So, that's an issue that's something that we'll probably put some cones on, at least on the bridges, on Route 30. When I first came here, they were parked along that pole, that area by the light house, and they put those signs up. Other than that, the lake was full. All right. Mike tasked me to put together a little letter about this whole licensing with the unregistered pets and vaccinations. Last year, we had three dog bites, three dog bites. So, there's a couple things that we gotta cover. So if you look on your, on the memo, I kinda highlighted the two main statute areas. 3581 and 3550, 3581 is a general requirements, which is basically licensing for how each, requires each municipality to charge a set fee, structure working for our dogs and so on, and they could, if you pull the whole thing out, they range from $4 to $10. And then it profanes to town clerks and municipalities how they send back the money to the state, and then how it's distributed. It goes between three agencies, Fish Wildlife Fund, Mission Health, Secretary of Cultural Interest. The statute for 3550 is the really one that I really wanted to cover. This was the, covers the penalties enforcement domestic patent, will hybrid, based on your municipalities. Designated officer, could be police, could be councilor, could be ACO. And it talks about that the max penalty for some kind of $500, and where our ordinance works, being on the penalty issue. There are a couple things that I definitely think that we could put in there, and we don't quote it, because we have to... That's the governing legislature that governs us for this, so we just have to make sure we're in tune with that. If you look at what the complaint is for any type of violation, is a degree of actual potential impact, respond as violation. Fixed, did they fix it, how long it taken, knowledge of violation, record of compliance, mitigating circumstances, could mean anything, death to a family, dog could be deceased, could be deceased, penalty, terms, enforcement costs, and like violation. Now, I don't know what the total might of the unregistered, I don't know how many animals.
Pretty long list, it's pretty...
99 dogs that have not been registered this year.
So comparing that, I do have a recommendation I'll to get to, but comparing that to our ordinance, it does list the authority of where it falls under for Title 24 VSA 2291, and the enforcement piece, which is 24 VSA 874. I think the animal control here should include all public roadways and castles, and not, I'm not talking as much more, because Creek Road's not on there quite. Just list, if you look at the ordinance, six, seven, twelve, now a line.
If I recall, isn't that area basically the village, the historic village, no?
The dogs, honestly, that one, Park Street.
I haven't been into that ordinance in quite a while.
That, it's a townwide ordinance, so it should cover all those roads that are now state roads, rabies state roads. So that's something that I noticed right away. The Article 3, which is part of our ordinance licensing vaccination programs to comply with the state statute, with some references, but could add Title 20 VSA 3581, just as a reference for time. The timeframes are critical in Article 5, it lists three days for the process for the response, and it should be 14 days under the state statute. 21 days to request an appeal, and if that appeal isn't done after 21 days, then it's automatically falls to the municipality, just like it does in the state, that's the way the penalty system works in the state. The penalties themselves are compliant with the state statutes. I did attend the ordinance, had a, how to create an ordinance and what laws govern it, when to do it. I wanna think with, when we did the noise ordinance, I think we were compliant, I think we had, how many days?
I know we made a point of being compliant.
I'm pretty sure we were compliant, so the same thing applied at this, if there's any modifications, we have to post it. So going back to this whole thing of license, which has been a pain and a town spot since I've been here, vaccinations, sometimes employees, sometimes people you know. I think for cost, my recommendation is that you send a letter out, violation of licensing or vaccination mandate, and if they're in that registered vaccine, within 14 days, they will be sent a VCVC complaint in the mail, like we mail out complaints all the time, with a penalty based on the criteria of the 3550, and they have 21 days to respond, if they don't respond within 21 days, they wanna contest it. The default goes to us, we just have to make sure that we appear whoever writes the complaints out, just like handle the traffic laws, the same procedure. I think going to each place and finding it is impossible, people are home, dogs inside, it's more confrontational. Now, if it gets to the point where they don't respond, then we do the, we do the in-person visits. The vaccination is critical, April 1st is, they have to show that they have them done.
So are you, is it safe to us?
That's my recommendation, that's my recommendation to deal with this, if you wanna do a low cost, but mailing out for those 99 people to do what I just asked.
I think that's a great place to start, and then we'll go from there. Just, I was just gonna ask you, in your opinion, are some of those 99 dogs not vaccinated?
I don't know, I would imagine...
That's why I use the word opinion.
I don't know, because I had a dog bite, the Nedger, you want?
No.
I had a dog bite last week when he got all the money, that ex-person got bit, Obama grandpa's not at the very top of the mountain there. Worthy wasn't the dog's fault, because they had it underground fence, and that first, that ex-person went up there, but they went beyond that fencing. And, but, she got bit, went to the hospital, checked with Nedger, had it, had it registered, but the vaccination expired a month ago, in June. Some bats will say that's all right, you know, it's not that long, I'd be different if it was like a 12-month gap where between vaccination, but they were, I told them to go to the hospital online. And I told her what she needs to do to put the sign up, put the boxes out there, let them leave underground, it's your responsibility to get them. It's not worth the dog bite.
That's the main thing, we need to make sure these dogs have had the rabies vaccine, I mean, rabies is mostly unsurvivable, you know, people die from it.
If they don't know it, they're gonna run you through the shots.
Yeah.
Now, they do that all the time, and I told her, I said, I don't know, you just need to go to the hospital, because the supervisor called from the hamster, I'm like... I tell them, no, I don't know, just really got...
The health office does get the, I'm the point of contact for the hospital, so I get those and I give them to Jim when they report a dog bite. So we do, we do get follow-up when they report it, if they don't report it, then we're not getting it.
So who's gonna be responsible for sending out these letters, the town clerk?
I'm gonna sit down, I'm gonna sit down, I gotta get a hold of Mike, he's not the easiest person to respond back. Last week, I left a couple messages, I know, it's, it's, sometimes I hear my sign, it was working, I understand, just let me go.
Yeah, I think you should go from the ACO as the enforcement person on this.
He's gotta start doing, he's gonna have to sit him down and talk about these, this whole thing.
So you're gonna drive that for us?
I got no choice.
Thank you.
He did come out, Robo's had a dog hanging all day, and I got a hold of him, and he did come out on Saturday.
Well, I think, we think we got the Park Street thing, so I think we gave it up pretty well.
I can't speak for the whole board, but I like your recommendation, and I would like to see you pursue that course of action. Does the rest of the board concur?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's less insurance, so let's just send the mail out.
We'll start with that, and if we can't get satisfaction, then we have to get a little tougher.
Just keep in mind, Pete, this will be the third letter that they've received, or notice.
The next one they get, if they don't respond within 14, will be the ticket, and then if they ignore that, they'll automatically go into fall.
It's a public safety issue, so we have to be pretty aggressive. Anything else, Chief?
I have one question for you.
Yes, dear.
Are the cars still being stolen?
Has the car still been stolen?
No. No, I just sent a case in to the one that I got the DNA back, so I gotta get, so we got, so we get a lot of them, which is, we've probably been involved in a lot of counties, ten cases of vehicle theft. Well, that's been good, because I really think that the four o'clock, you know, the late hour shift that we're covering up is done, but that's good. I, I come on, I only brought my five, so there's not much of a gap there. I come in early, so.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
UDR discussion. Um, Mary Lee, you went through, and what did you find?
Oh my gosh. Everybody bring your paper.
I've got two different versions here, and, uh...
This is the most recent.
That, that's right here.
Okay. Page four, it says it, but that's, that's the, the table.
So did you make a list of where you thought we should change it?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Page fifty-eight, it says zoning district. I think it should be UDR district. Page sixty-six, it says zoning permit. Page eighty, it says town zoning. Eighty-three is zoning permit. Eighty-seven and eighty-eight, that's that one section. There's a lot of them in that one particular section. Um, now on eighty-eight, it says administrative permit. One thirteen says administrative, one eighteen administrative permit. And then one twenty-seven, it says a definition, definition of that. And then under page one forty-two, it refers to zoning. All through it, there are, I wanna say hundreds, just a lot of where it says UDR permit or administrative permit.
There were forty-three locations where zoning was changed to either administrative or UDR in this document.
Okay. So these, these are the ones that I have found, that I was more concerned about what I found on page one hundred, which says, I can find it.
It's on page hundred.
I got it. The planning commission shall consist of not fewer than five nor more than nine persons. The select board may inform the planning commission at the same turn as the others. Not fewer than five, we only have three.
We have a five-member board with two vacancies right now, and unfortunately, we haven't had anyone step up to fill those vacancies.
I don't know how you can say you have a five-member board. It's, it's like the, uh, DRB board. We have a nine, we put nine members, which you don't even have a quorum anymore.
So what are you trying to suggest here?
What I'm trying to say is, we don't officially have a five-member board if they're, just because they're empty.
Okay. Did you get anything from VLCT on that?
I looked again, and I wrote to them today, they haven't, and I called them, they haven't replied.
So that's, that's my sticky one.
I know when you called me the other day, I, I took a look at that and, and, you know, on page one hundred, and then I thought about it, and in a lot of ways, equates to the select board, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, um, but if, you know, if two of us resigned, there'd be a three-member board, which would still have the authority to operate, but it would be their responsibility, the three mem, remaining members, to advertise, solicit applications, and then appoint two more members. In this case, we appoint the members, not the planning commission, but it's the same concept, that the board still functions, as, but if you went down to two members for a select board, you wouldn't be able to function. I'm not sure what you'd do then, if you had three members resign at once, but...
Different times, we have had five members. I mean, at one time, you had, uh, Mike Olden and Jim Thompson there, I think along with what's here now.
I think we might have actually had five and an alternate one time, but that was years ago.
I think, uh, Joe Mark was an alternate on something.
He was an alternate on the DRB.
Oh, okay.
So I would think, two things, we need to, again, I know that Mike had an ad looking for people, and I guess we should keep that up continuously on the town's website and on, uh, front page forum or wherever else on social media that people look today, maybe Roy's paper. Um, but there's still, as long as all three of those members are at a meeting, they have a quorum, and if they make any decisions, all three have to be there, and it has to be unanimous. Unfortunately, this is a problem that lots of communities face, that it's hard to get people to serve on these boards. We're one of the bigger communities, I don't know what they do in...
Wells has nine, nine actively elected. What's more, they're elected, they're not, they're not appointed. The only place in the state that's they're elected.
Wow. So I think that we're still, we're certainly legal, but we do need to actively recruit more members. If someone's vacant, they don't have a, if someone's absent, they don't have a quorum, and they can't vote.
I would make a motion to appoint Mary Lee Harris to the planning commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kerry, when are you gonna join the planning commission?
All right, we got one more. Who's looking good in the background there?
I just volunteered, volunteered Kerry.
I got, I got too many hats already.
I know you do. Um, so Mary Lee, the, the, I'm, I'm going to say that at this point in time, we're gonna, the planning commission is functional, but not ideal. We really need to recruit more members.
And we're gonna hear back from the VLCT on whether we're okay or not.
And the VLCT has, you know, they're typically very good at getting back to us, but not necessarily in a day. So, once we get an answer to that question, we'll make sure that you're aware of that answer as well as the rest of the board.
I basically agree with you, but I guess what I'm tolerant about is at us, that somehow we have to get these boards filled.
We have a four-member board now.
That's right, you just got elected to the planning commission. Um, so Mary Lee, can you provide, I'm not sure how we can do this, but we'll figure out a way.
I would be glad to sit down with Frank and show him those, and let him...
Well, at this point, it's out of the planning commission's hands, it's in our hands.
Oh, okay.
So what, if you could provide me with a list of what you found?
Okay.
And then if we have to convene a special meeting before the eleventh to finalize a, a draft, then we'll do that. But I need to know what you found, and then, uh, I don't know, maybe I'll get with Mark or Rob as a subcommittee, you know, legally, we, two guys can do, two people can do that, and we'll go through it and see if we agree or disagree with you, and then we'll figure out how we're gonna resolve this. Because we have to approve this by the eleventh, or not approve it at all and start the whole process over again, and I don't wanna do that to the planning commission.
But some of these things, like where I put the administrative permit, it was just a reference, it wasn't that it should be changed. I'm just saying that throughout it, there's all UDR ones, there's all these administrative ones, and all of a sudden, one section is zoning.
Well, the, the one on page eighty-eight, I think it's eighty-eight, eighty-seven or eighty-eight, I think it should remain zoning, because that's exactly what it is, is a zoning permit. Or you could call it, and you could change the name to administrative permit, but I don't see where that's of any consequence. And, um, you all saw the email that Frank Johnson sent me with, with the planning commission's ...
Yeah, but he was all agreeable on it last time before he wrote that.
Personally, I think that it should remain zoning. You know, zoning is a subset of the UDR.
Zoning is contained within the UDR.
The permit is a permit to, uh, build in accordance with that zoning permit. And if you made it a UDR permit, I think it would just open the permit up to everything that's in the UDR. So if you got a permit to build a house, and your carpenter started a half hour early, you're in violation. Does that make your permit null and void?
It doesn't make what kind of permit it is.
Because if it's called a zoning permit, it just references the zoning ordinances that are primarily based on square footage of the lot size. So the, the UDR contains more than just zoning stuff?
I realize that. Well, just one for instance here, it's on page fifty-eight, and it's called a zoning district, down, down in the last, last part. Why wouldn't that be a UDR district, not a zoning district? It's not a permit, it's a district.
Because it's a district based on the zoning regulations that are, for the most part, square footage, lot size oriented. UDR covers the entire town, but the entire town isn't zoned the same. There's different zoning districts.
And may you read this out for nothing?
I'm not saying that, I'm having a conversation with you.
So I think, Mary Lee, what I would like you to do, if you're willing, is to, uh, before we leave tonight, I'll take that and I'll go in the radio room and make a copy of it.
Okay, it's just this corner where...
Right, yep, just a copy of that page, and then I'll take a look at it and confer with one of these two gentlemen, and we'll reach a consensus and then decide what our course of action is after that. And if we have to have a special meeting, we will.
Just like I said, these little starred ones are just reference.
Yep, so, so if I've got a copy of that page, then that'll give me a place to start.
Sounds good to me.
Because, um, like I said, I know there's forty-three places in there where zoning was changed to either UDR or administrative already.
I'm sure there was.
Okay, so we have a course of action for that, ready? Agreed?
Yep, we have to get this done.
Tier one B regional plan. Mark, I'm gonna ask you to give me a spiel on that.
Um, so we all attended the meeting with Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the regional plan, everybody remembers that, and we can apply for tier one B, which would mean that within the, the designated downtown districts, certain projects that without tier one B would require Act two fifty would be exempt from Act two fifty if we apply for and are given tier one B.
If we opt into tier one B.
If we opt into tier one B. Will this change anything in the town? Probably not. It's not changing our zoning. This is just saying that within those districts, certain projects that would require Act two fifty now would not. Um, the only example that I can think of for this, to put it into context, in Virgens, uh, a fellow was building a, a nine-unit apartment building, because ten would have triggered Act two fifty, and when they bought into a tier one B, he was able to change his plans and make that a ten-unit building, and in fact, build two more of them within their downtown district. Is that gonna happen in Castleton? Probably not. Virgens is, because of its proximity in Chittenden County, was a perfect place for it.
This would only be, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would only be in the areas that we asked to extend the designation for the downtown village areas. And some of those were allowed and some were not, and I don't have that map here, but...
Correct. And, and whether those areas fit the designation is not up to us. So, I'm in favor of applying for this, I don't think it's gonna change anything, and the reason I'm in favor of it is because I think that, um, Rutland Regional Planning Commission does a good job, and I think that, um, we should be active participants in the work that they're doing and support the work they're doing. I know that not everybody in the community feels that way, um, but I think that they're working really hard to make sure that future growth in Vermont is planned and not willy-nilly. I'm old enough to remember when Act two fifty started, and, and it was patched together in just a matter of months because of some of the ski area development that was going on, because there, there were no regulations. Mount Snow is why Act two fifty happened. You know, that was a way ahead of Killington and some of the other ski resorts, it was really, really popular in the sixties, and everybody that had a hammer and a nail was building vacation homes down at Stratton. There were no septic regulations, you know, it was just horrible, and, and we don't wanna see that here. We wanna protect our water quality, not just in Castleton, but in the whole state. We wanna protect, again, certain types of development, uh, lake shore development, river corridor development. We wanna make sure that, not, not that we're taking people's properties rights away, but that this is done in a responsible way, that our kids and grandkids are not gonna have to clean the mess up for.
Well, and in any case, if, if, if it's one of these, you know, if a proposed development didn't trigger Act two fifty, it would still have to comply with our regulations and all other state regulations.
This would not change our zoning or any state regulations at all. It's an effort to stimulate more housing growth in the state, because we know that we need more housing, and, uh, it's tough to do that, you know? There's a lot of places in this town, you could build a single-family house right now, and, and that's four, five hundred dollars a square foot. You're talking eight hundred thousand dollars to build a new three-bedroom house, and, uh, we're, we're not getting too many young families to move in that are capable of that. So this is an effort to say, hey, what if you could build multifamily units in these designated downtown districts? Because they want these units to be built where there's infrastructure, you know, where there's already septic lines, water lines, so we're not trying, you know, not having septic systems that fail.
Would you like to make a motion?
Do we, do we want, like Route four A to be littered with like ten or fifteen apartment house buildings down through there, though? Is that what we're really looking for in town? Is that what we want the scope of Castleton to be?
No, no, and they would still have to pass our zoning and regulations. You know, could we stand one of them? If it was a nice one, we sure could. Um, you know, I don't mind being recorded and going on record as saying, I'm not, I don't think that ten units of subsidized housing would help Castleton at all.
But if we opt into this, what's to stop that?
Our own, our own zoning regulations.
It just means that they wouldn't have to go through Act two fifty. So, in summary, I find it kind of inconsequential for us whether we apply for tier one B or not.
Because our regular zoning is gonna cover us.
And I don't think anyone's gonna come and say, yeah, this is an area that we could build this housing in, it would make financial sense.
So ask the question again, are you willing to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we, uh, opt into tier one B of the regional plan.
Any more discussion?
Got him.
He was over here for a while. No, hearing no, no more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Bob's on two.
I don't know.
Bob, did you hear that?
Aye, 'cause our zoning's gonna cover us anyway, so...
Aye.
Bob, are you voting on this?
He's muted right now.
Well, then, no, four ayes and one no vote, so the ayes have it, so we're gonna move on. Crystal Lane, um, there was a, at the last meeting, the lady came and, um, suggested that we consider making Crystal Lane one-way. I went up there and took a ride both ways on it, and I think turning into there is much more comfortable than coming out of there. So I'm not opposed to that if, but I wanna get the rest of the board's consent. And highway foreman, do you have an opinion on this?
I also went both ways, and I agree.
Okay, so-
Going, yeah, in or out from Route 30?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's sketchy pulling out of there on Route 30.
I think that's pretty unanimous. So. Heath?
Just all my years, the only downfall of that is springtime. We know how muddy Crystal Haven, East Crystal Haven, that first step has got. If you could, is it, if you make it a one-way, can you cover it up if we get an emergency where we have to send people out that way for a couple of weeks where that's muddy? Is that, would that be? That's the only downfall I see of making that one-way. That thing's not friendly coming out of there. I agree 100%.
What if we make it one-way at the highway foreman's discretion? Can we do that legally?
That's just gonna cause confusion.
Yeah, I think it's-
If you're gonna do it, it's gotta be one-way all the time or not at all.
Except in those rare times when Crystal, East Crystal Haven needs to get minimized traffic, right? Is that what you're talking about, Heath?
Yeah, we've had times it's impassable.
Can it be one-way except for emergency service vehicles?
No, what he's talking about is people getting in and out of East Crystal Haven when they're up to their axle in mud, so.
Well, I think that'd be an extenuating-
Yeah, I think that's how we'd have to handle it.
So if, so let's make it, let's consider making it one-way, except when you, the highway foreman, or the town manager deem it necessary to make it two-way.
Would there be a problem with-
And then we just have to come up with the appropriate signage. Okay, now, I'll ask-
Okay, you've got it marked, one-way. Going one-way for six months. All of a sudden, he took the sign down. Is that going to be confusing? I mean, people are used to doing something, are they going to continue doing something?
I think the best way to handle this is change it the way you're talking about. One-way. If there is extenuating circumstances, we use our methods that we always use. We put it on the social media, we put it out, we put signs up, we cover the one-way sign. We could, there's things that we can do that limit the traffic on that particular East Crystal Haven, the first section of it. So I think that's, rather than what-if it to death, because we could come up with the other scenarios probably as well, is just change it and then we deal with, when we put detour signs up, roads, people travel that road all the time, and then all of a sudden, whoop, they hit a detour sign, they gotta do something different.
You're the road commissioner, so you should have the discretion to do that if you deem necessary, correct?
Could we put a sign up that just said "dangerous outlet"?
It's not gonna stop people from, well, not that a sign will stop everybody anyway, but-
I think a one-way would be more effective.
Let's make it one-way, and then if we need to, if you need to change it, then let us know and change it. You are the road foreman, or road commissioner, I mean.
Do we need a motion on that, or no?
It's a couple of signs, so, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have a motion that way. They know that the select board backed this, and it's not.
I would make a motion to make Crystal Lane one-way. That would be going from Route 30 down to East Crystal Haven. Second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob? We've got a couple of grants to accept.
Make a motion to accept the grants and aid grant agreement number GA 0985 for $24,000 for Moscow Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to accept Better Roads Grant Agreement number BR 1322 for $20,000 for Moscow Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jeff, it's my understanding you did those grants?
Yes, sir.
Nice work.
Thank you, Jeff.
Absolutely.
Now, let's talk about Brown Farm Road culverts. Do you have a recommendation, Jeff?
Yes, it was for Ferguson to supply the culverts for us. And it'll be done by the town after we wrap up our paving prep and get through some of the Moscow grant work.
So you kinda just faded out there. You said the town was gonna do the work?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of 100 linear feet of 95 by 67-inch galvanized 12-gauge culvert, four bands, five welded fish baffles from TW Ferguson Corporation for the sum of $26,106.30.
Second.
Moved and seconded to buy the culvert, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Driveway approach policy. Has everyone had a chance to read this? So if you're willing, Rob, would you make a motion to accept it and then we'll discuss it?
I would make a motion to accept the driveway approach policy letter number 0728-2025. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
I would just assume that this was something that we were already doing. I mean, if we're, if you pave a road, every town that you go through, usually you see them only do to the right-of-way. You don't see somebody fix an entire driveway when they pave the road.
I guess we didn't have a clear concise policy on this, Mike, is that what this is?
Yeah, we had the driveway cut policy, like giving a permit for someone to put a driveway in. But when we start doing more and more of these sidewalk projects and stuff, we didn't have anything that talked, especially on sidewalks. Because we're dealing with a couple of different residences right now, the church and Mike Holden's place, that, there was issues there. So this would be clear policy out there, and people know that it's their responsibility to be on the, outside of the right-of-way to make adjustments to their own driveway.
I just think that we need to make sure, like the issue with the church where they butt up pavement to pavement, that they do seal that properly. Because I would agree that no sealer was put in, because my driveway's trashed where the two met too.
They really should put a lap join in, not just butt them together, because that's the worst for water.
We just need to make sure that whatever we do is adequate to protect the residence portion of it, so that we don't create a problem.
So that should be in the bid spec when the sidewalk projects are put out to bid, that the proper methods for joining the existing and-
It isn't a paving project, it's just, we haven't put it in, I don't think, really specified in the sidewalk ones.
We need to do that so that we are covered as well. And protects the landowners as well. Should be done right.
But everything that's in this policy letter here, I think, is just what's common practice across the state anyway, so.
It is. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this does have a signature for the back? I don't see it signed, or do you wanna sign it? There's, sorry, select board signatures in the back.
You didn't have anything in the blue folder?
No.
Oh, I did have one more thing, though, that I see highlighted here. It might be just a misprint, or I might be reading it wrong. On the back page, "Any damages caused from paving or sidewalk projects must be reported to the town manager, DPW director, or DPW foreman within 30 days of the initial damage. Damage reported after five days will void any obligation to the town may have to repair." Should that second five days, should that be 30 days?
No, we talked about it, instead of saying 30, we said five days, and we'll deal with the one-offs, like somebody's on vacation and they couldn't do it.
But before it, it says 30 days.
Yeah, probably just that, Jeff, in your version, could you change that? I'll go over with you. And if I leave that in the boxes for signature, could you do that?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll make the correction on that.
Correct one, yeah. That was all that I had.
Good catch, Rob. LDH for the fire department. Chief, you got three quotes, I think I know what your recommendation is, but would you care to share that with us?
This come about our annual hose testing. Happened last Wednesday morning. We started this and we lost the 800 feet of LDH. We don't have any spare of that kicking around. The other stuff, we have plenty of spare, but that stuff, we don't have any spare. And that's where that come from. The three quotes in New York. I don't have the thing in front of me. I told Christine which one it was, it's, I believe it's the lowest cost one.
This one?
Yeah, the lowest cost.
The one where it's $1,148 a hose?
What's that?
The one where it's $1,148 a hose as opposed to $1,500 and change?
Yeah.
New York Fire Equipment LLC.
Yeah, that's the one.
Well, that's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, the lowest one.
There's no differences in quality?
No, there's all the textile, and this is actually not just the rover, this is the double-jacketed stuff that they priced.
How old is the hose you're replacing?
Some of it's been here before I was chief, and that happened to be 20 years this year. I just looked the other day because somebody asked, so it's 20 years old.
That was the stuff the college bought us back when they stole-
Area was chief.
Way back.
It's 25, 30 years old, some of that yellow LDH. When we had a primary issue with the college and the college office, the first round of LDH.
Because they didn't have-
You take better care of the new stuff, then.
Did we make a motion yet?
I would make a motion to approve eight 5-inch by 100-foot yellow Maga Flow, Mega Flow breathers hose for the sum of $9,190 from New York Fire Equipment LLC.
Second.
Moved and seconded to buy the hose, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just go along with this hose testing, I don't know how many get followed, but we had a fallen firefighter in Connecticut voluntary program over the weekend. Looks like a coupler broke on a hose line and chopped through his leg, and he ended up passing away before they could get him to surgery. This hose testing is more and more common. We used to do it ourselves, and now we hired it out, and it takes some of that responsibility away. So thank you guys for supporting us on that.
I know I've shared this story before, but in naval firefighting school, they simulate a broken hose, and we all have to stand around and watch it. And, yeah, it would be, it could be fatal very easily.
When I'm reading between the lines, somebody drove over a line in this city fire department and ruptured a coupler, and the coupler got it.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you know-
Well, they used to simulate that.
Say that, listen, we did our due diligence, we have tested, so.
We used to have to go to firefighting school for one week a year, every year, and they used to always simulate that, and it was scary.
Of course, there.
Yep. So, moving on, let's see, unlicensed dog report, do we need to go through this again? We've already done this.
I think we covered it all.
We pretty well covered it, we have a course of action, so we're gonna move on. Fire District 1 Facility Rental Agreement Discussion. Mike, you wanna kick this off? We have nothing in writing, but I think I know what the plan is, so if you would share that with the rest of the board.
Sure. We had some discussions with Fire District 1 on renting the Vermont Room, the guidance, old guidance house, counselor office at the village school. And out in the hallway, there's a storage closet that would be included for their records. There's an exterior entrance into that room, so that gives the Fire District a way to come in and out of there without having to go through the common area. Their current lease is, it's run out with another, with the business owner in Castleton, so they were looking at finding a space in the village school. So we, they find it suitable. We come up with a dollar amount, I think the board was aware of that, it was $800 a month. I spoke with Kerry today, and our attorney, and a two-year renewable lease is acceptable, at least for one, they have, their Prudential Board hasn't, hasn't met on that. And then they would include heat, electricity, water, sewer. The general cleaning of the building is still our responsibility. They'd get five parking spaces on the backside, that little alcove area around back. It would be in the contract that increases to the rent would be based upon the Consumer Price Index for the northeast as of the end of the year, each year. Rent would be due at the first of the month. And then there's standard language that the attorney would make sure is included in here, but at least if the board was amenable to these basic terms, then the Fire District, we know kinda where they stand, and we can start, I can get the attorney to finish everything up and have something to present to the board. But I think the goal is to have this effective one August.
I'm not opposed to getting started with a handshake. Are you, you okay with that, Kerry?
Yeah, I am. Kind of the reason, we really had no reason to want to move, but if we had a look at it, if we can support the town and support the recreation building and whatever, to me, it's worth the move. I'm joking, you said the white guy gonna sell it, but I agree, because we don't have to work out of the trunk of the car.
We have no plans on selling that building in the short term.
I told Billy, we lease it until you guys buy us out.
If you wanted to show up and buy that building and build us a new rec center, we might consider that, but, you know, that's-
And we'll take over the Fire District.
We waited three years to get the financing, to replace the water line, through those orders, and then finally have approved it, we're just waiting for the bond by three years and took it to the bank.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we got a handshake, and we can get going on this. Is the rest of the board in agreement with that?
I would agree.
I think it's something to do with the town, so I think we need a-
Did we already make a motion to authorize the town manager to proceed with this, or should we do that?
I believe we did, but let's do it again to be sure.
Go for it, Mark.
I would make a motion that the select board authorize town manager to sign a contract with the Water District for rental of office space as described at the Castle and Recreation Center. Is that firm price, all done?
Eight hundred.
$800 triple net.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate you supporting the rec center.
It makes sense to me, that's, you know, it's something that, you know, it's a lot of possibilities that are, a little bit of steady income goes a long ways.
Certainly doesn't hurt. Now we get to set the tax rate. Well, you guys have all been through this before, so you know what needs to happen here, right? We gotta specify the municipal rate. And the local tax agreements for a total tax rate for municipal, and then have to accept the education rates from the state.
And then the low and, I don't know if you mentioned it, the interest, did you mention that, the low and high penalty rate?
Oh, that's right, we gotta do that, too. And I went through a couple of scenarios here, and it doesn't, your tax burden isn't significantly different than it was last year. Do you agree with that, Mark?
I do.
You agree with that, too, are you?
I do, I'd point out that the homestead and non-homestead educational component is actually, came out better than the municipal side, so usually it's the opposite. But there was significant decrease in the homestead and non-homestead rates.
Yeah, last year, it's a couple of different reasons. One, the main reason is the CLA has been, you know, our new appraisal, or our new reappraisal of CLA went from .7 to 1.01. And then after the state adjustment, it was actually adjusted to 1.4, which is, if anyone understands how CLA works, that's really good news.
Yeah, the higher the number, the better.
Yeah, it's a divider, so they divide whatever our liability or our obligation is to the state by 1.4 instead of by .7, so that makes a huge difference in the tax rate. So the homestead rate last year was 1.6114, this year it's .95. Last year, the non-homestead rate was 1.9866, this year it's 1.2138. So that's outstanding news, actually. news, actually. And the municipal tax rate went from, uh, where the point five four five five to point three eight three four. Now, everyone's assessment went up, but the tax rate, the municipal tax rate was cut by a similar amount, so basically the municipal rate is almost a wash.
So, do we need municipal total?
Do we need municipal rate plus local tax agreements for a total, Mike? Isn't that how we have to do it?
Yes, please.
You understand, Rob?
So, we need the one.
Line A, line B for a total municipal to be raised by taxes.
I would make a motion that we approve the municipal tax rate.
Actually, Rob, we have to set the tax rate.
I would set the tax rate, the municipal amount to be raised by taxes at point three seven nine six, and the local tax agreement at point zero zero three eight for a total of point three eight three four. How bad did I butcher that one?
Oh, you did good.
You got it. Second.
Been moved and seconded to set the local tax rate. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, what do I need next?
We have to accept the, um, homestead and non-homestead rate.
C and D.
Correct.
We need a motion to accept?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the home, the homestead education assessment for the homestead education grant list at point nine five eight nine, and the non-homestead at one point two one three eight.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the education tax rates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we gotta set the low and high penalty rate.
I would make a motion to set the low penalty rate for late homestead declaration filing at three percent.
You can do them both at once.
And the high penalty rate for late homestead declaration filing at three percent.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to set the penalty rates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's done. So, this was actually very welcome news. I was pretty pleased with this when I saw this. I know a lot of people were a little bit nervous when their assessments went up. An average, townwide average was sixty-eight percent, but when the tax rates get reduced by that amount, it works out to almost just a wash. I mean, my, my taxes for this year, I went up seventy-four percent, not sixty-eight, and my taxes this coming year will be about two hundred dollars higher than they were last year, which is not horrible. Okay, uh, Rec Department Staffing Discussion. So, I do have, and we all got a, uh, or hopefully we all got the, um, job description that has been generated for the rec program coordinator and facilitator. So, and I also have, and I don't know if you've actually disseminated this one, the roustabout?
No.
Because that's still tentative, right?
It's, it's online, and that's, that's been advertised as well. And, uh, wastewater ones advertised.
So, what I, as I told you the other day, I was skeptical that this is the right approach.
Mm.
And I told you that I'd give you an opportunity to change my mind, but it turns out I'm not the only board member that's skeptical, so, um, I'm gonna give you a shot at this now, Mike.
Well, as I stated to you the other day, I'm not sure if I can convince you if your mind's made up, but, um, I, I guess what is the concerns? Um, maybe I can address the concerns rather than me just blah blah.
I'm gonna let Mark answer that, because he's usually more eloquent than I am when it comes to things like this.
Well, I don't know about eloquent. I'm, I, I think we're all really committed to the rec center, but I feel really committed to it. I think that this is a really, really important program in our community. I think that it's in its infancy, and we certainly have had some struggles with it, but I don't wanna get discouraged by that. I think that we have the opportunity to grow a really, really robust rec center here that I, I don't really think it's ever gonna be self-supporting, but I think can get a lot, lot closer than it is right now. But I don't see that as something that's possible to obtain with a part-time person. Um, you know, someone that's working twenty-four hours a week would be able to handle the administrative issues that have been a problem for us in the past. So, a month ago, I think this made sense. We needed someone that, um, we were looking at dividing that position, so we had a person that was doing more, um, fieldwork and maintenance work, and we needed someone that would handle this administrative paperwork. Um, starting with a clean slate, I think that we could combine most of that into one position. Some of the maintenance is still gonna be an outlier, but I think that if we're going to have a, a recreation center, and we're gonna have robust programming that makes it closer to being self-supporting, we need someone that's gonna work forty hours a week. My concern is, if we have someone that's filling out the forms and someone else doing maintenance, every time there's an issue, it's gonna go to you, and you're gonna be the default rec manager, and, and you don't have the extra twenty hours in your week. You, you've got more important things to do. So, in my opinion, we need to find someone that has, um, an educational background in operating this type of facility, and, and a desire, they have, someone that has focused their career on, on public recreation. That's the real reason that I think that we should change this. The other reason is that the voters approved a full-time recreation director, and I think that they overwhelmingly approve that, and I think that that's what we're obligated to provide.
I agree.
I knew you would. Well, I knew that ahead of time.
I was just gonna bring up that the voters approved a full-time rector, actor. I don't know if we can go back on that now without having it put to another vote of the town.
They didn't, they didn't approve, they approved a budget. They didn't approve a person, because we, we, we move things around all the time, because it's based on budgets. So, I would argue the fact that they may, that, that was part of the budget, but it's not, they didn't specifically or separately approve a person.
I think we should explore both possibilities, and if, and if, do we know what it would take to attract a qualified person that would be a full-time rector that could actually do what we want them to do?
It's all over the, if you look at VLCT, that's the only thing I can really gauge it on, or go on the internet and look at other, uh, what average salaries are for people in Vermont, you know, of these small communities. But, get, my guess would be, you're gonna talk somewhere around with, you know, no, no benefits, probably just salary fifty, fifty-two, maybe? And then, depending on what you get, you could throw another forty thousand on for, um, for benefits if it's a family health plan.
Which we can't control anyway on any job that we have for the town, so.
I think we have the resources in the community to do that. You know, what I would like to see is a committee apprised of the town manager, maybe somebody from this board. I'm not really gonna die on that hill. Someone from Friends of Rec, someone from the Rec Commission, and, uh, I think with those resources, we could find the right person, put the time in, might not be the first person. I know that there's been offers from, uh, the athletic director of the university. Is that the correct term for, um?
Deanna Tyson.
Deanna Tyson, and.
VP of Athletics.
Yeah, she's over the whole system now.
She's a professional in that field, and is it Mary Beth Lennox Levens who teaches the program, the graduate program at the university for recreational professionals, recreation management? So, I think there's a lot of resources there, and, uh, boy, we've, we've put a lot of time and energy into this program, and I think everybody agrees that the rec center is an important part of the community. We haven't been able to gain the traction that we want, but it doesn't mean we failed. We just haven't succeeded in the way that we want to yet. I have no doubt that we will. It's just, it's a hard process to make something the way you want it to be, and I think we have a lot of people that are dedicated to it. I know the, you know, the people on the Rec Commission have put a lot into it. Um, I bring up Martha a lot, but, you know, she's been on that board for decades, and, uh.
Long time.
Pardon me?
Long time.
A long time. She's put heart and soul in it. You know, she's turned Crystal Beach from a mess into a real moneymaker for the community. That makes a lot of money, and, and the Friends of Rec, I have no doubt that they can do the same thing at that facility, but Crystal Beach didn't become a financial powerhouse in five years or even ten, and, and the rec center's gonna take time, too. But I think that we have the right people and the dedication to make it happen.
So, what are we suggesting for our next steps here? I think, um, I think we should explore both possibilities personally. If not, not necessarily rescind our search for a part-time person, but also expand our search for a full-time person and see what comes up.
One of the things I, I, I don't believe that there's enough work to warrant forty hours, and I probably know more than probably anybody in this room being involved with it. I've worked with one, uh, rec director who was on one end of the spectrum, and another one was at the other end of the spectrum. Um, and somewhere, if we can meet in the middle, that would probably be a, a great solution. Um, but I, I was thinking that if we could find someone that had, you know, because the wage can be, um, adjusted on this because it's part-time, so you get a, you can put more into a wage because you're not getting the benefits part of it, and see if they're worth anything, and we don't go down this, this road again of finding someone that's, doesn't work out. And I, I'm not a leadership-by-committee person. Um, I, I find a lot of flaws in it, and I really want that to be said, and, um, I'd like to go in executive session, if you'd mind, so I can talk personnel, uh, that's, could put the town at a disadvantage by talking about it openly. But that'd be my, my stance on it.
And suspend this until executive session?
I'll just say my piece on the part-time thing is, my concern is, I guess what we want the thing to be currently part-time, you're saying, will be acceptable for the amount of work that's down there, but that, what happens down there needs to pretty much double, if not triple, in the near future here, so there's gonna be more hours that are gonna be taken up as that grows down there.
I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna disagree with that. I just think that there's been, there's been the shortfalls in, uh, skills, on how long it takes to do things, and some indecision is part of that, too, and, uh, there's personalities involved, whether it's Friends of Rec, Rec Commission, uh, Select Board, me, there's a lot of personalities involved in this, and you can't run something with a general committee running it. It doesn't work. You can't have many masters. So, I think there's some issues that I'd like to discuss about that, and the personal part of it, but.
Nothing, okay, Mary, Mary?
Um, I just would like to clarify, um, that, that you said you, you want, you think you should pursue both finding a part-time and a full-time person at the same time?
I didn't necessarily, I'm not saying we hire one of each. I'm saying, let's explore the possibility.
How do, how do you do a search for both?
You throw a cast out, you throw a net out there and see what turns up. At this point, we can advertise, you know, maybe I'm being a little bit naive here, but I think if you cast a wide net, you might get something quite attractive.
I just wanted to say with all due respect, I think that's very confusing to the community.
Fair enough.
I've had interviews before where we've, we've hired somebody, and the questions on the, on the board are, if this could turn into a full-time job, would you be interested? You know, we started off as part-time, and we've had that happen, but if they're not interested in, uh, this going full-time, we'd know upfront whether they're, you know, they'd be, they'd be there through the, you go through all this process of training people and getting them, um, to, uh, be proficient, I guess, and then they don't wanna take the full-time position that grows into that.
Just to, just to throw in my two cents, and I think we should, like, check with a rec, a recreation department that is full-time, successful, and whatnot, and see just how they handle mowing the lawn compared to answering the telephone, or that's very small, what I'm saying, but do other rec departments have two different, two different jobs?
Brandon does. Um, Pittsburgh has a rec director, and they have a maintenance person that they hire, uh, who's actually, when I talked to Liz last time, um, stays on year round. Um, their functions in the summer are, they have a rec area down there, more focus on that, and the winter, it's more, you know, building maintenance and shoveling and all that kinda stuff.
Are they equal to our size, and are they full-time directors?
Uh, smaller than ours, full-time director.
They are full-time.
Do they have a facility, an indoor facility like ours?
Not like ours, no.
I think that's what we have that's really unique. You know, a lot of communities have a recreation director, and they handle youth sports, because that's kinda what rec has always been, and we have an opportunity to make recreation, the recreation department responsible to all the citizens in the community, because we have this big facility. So, yeah, we still want it to be Little League baseball, but we also have, we do currently have the Horticulture Club that I think serves an older contingency of people, but, and I, I'm aware that we have the senior center in town, and that they do a lot of activities, but I think we have an opportunity to continue to grow the kinda programs that have started already. Tonight, there's the little girls' dance program down there. Um, I don't know if the youth theater group is still there.
Not right now.
The only things that we don't have at that building are the things that we haven't thought of yet, but we know that we have a pretty good-sized community, and a lot of people that I don't think are living their most fulfilled life and would like some other things to do, and I think that we could provide that and improve our whole community, but it's, it's not gonna happen, in my opinion, part-time. I think we need someone that buys into that, that mindset, that recreation indoor and outdoor is really important in the health of a community, and someone that can develop these programs, can think them up and implement and get the people. So, we have, you know, men's basketball that, that works, and, and yoga, and, uh, poker night, whatever it is, whatever it is that people would enjoy doing, lectures on different things, you know, that's something that we've never had, um, and I think would be popular to different groups of people, you know, whether it was, uh, political lectures, historical, uh, authors. Um, in Polton, they used to do the Lincoln dinners. Geez, they would pack the church for that. You know, we just, if we don't have it, it's just because we haven't thought about it yet.
We have a comment from.
I'm just wondering if we could create a subcommittee that would really explore this. I would love to be on that committee, um, and I was involved in helping paint the room for the, uh, yoga and exercise, and I had to back away a little bit because we had a lot of family issues, but I am committed to investing in the rec center big time.
Well, at this point, I think, say, nothing's off, off the table at this point, so we're gonna.
I agree with what Mike said, that you can't have someone who's responsible to a committee. If we hire a full-time rec director, their supervisor can't be Mike and the Select Board and the Rec Board and the Friends of Rec. You know, we have to have someone that You know, we have to have someone that can fit a job description, be responsible to Mike and be capable of managing and working with these human resources, but not being pushed around by them. I'm not saying that anybody pushed anybody around. I'm just saying that there's a lot of people involved to make this work. And, and yeah, we need someone that has that ability to, to be a good manager and be responsible to the town manager. As a committee, I was strictly suggesting that as a search committee.
We don't need someone just to fill a job. We need someone that's willing to put their heart and soul into it and part-time isn't simple.
I think that's subjective, but you have your opinion and I respect that.
We're going to take a comment from Andy.
Just real quick, just a couple of points. I am worried we need a full-time position to attract a qualified person. It's been a full-time position and we had two folks that maybe didn't quite totally fit the bill. And if we went down to a part-time position, I'd be even more fearful that we wouldn't get the right person. I would also, with a part-time person, be worried about creating these like one or two-year positions. And we're going to lose this like history, this institutional knowledge that becomes so important in a position like this. Especially this position is so much people, person networking, getting to know all the people that have awesome skills in this town and having them instruct and do great things. And it takes years to like build that network. And if we're just going to be rolling part-time folks through this, it, I'm a little worried about creating a robust REC Center. And I'll say, I think there's also room for grant writing within this position. Sure, our group of friends has the capacity as a not-for-profit to write for grants and do fundraising. That's our major objective. But there are also municipality grants for recreation. And so that's something none of our REC Directors have had the time or capacity for in their full-time positions. And so this could be a position that brings in money, like Highway. You know, like we saw those awesome grants that came through. That could be happening with REC as well. So thanks for considering that.
I think we're going to move on to Manager's Report and we'll continue a discussion for Personnel. Thank you all for participating. And we're, we're going to come up with a course of action. We just don't know what that is yet. Like I said, at this point, nothing's off the table. Manager's Report.
Um, what I'm pleased, on page one of this report, we're actually moving forward with the pedestrian accessibility grant for Main Street. That, that's been stalled and not, nothing that, it's not the speed of town thing. This was, the funding wasn't there. We were waiting for the, for the funding to come in. So now that Stephanie Burke is on board, I had a meeting with her. And she reminded me that there's only Phase One of this project. They split it into three phases and I had to go back and look at the notes, the minutes and stuff, because I thought it went all the way from basically Glenbrook Road to the Amtrak Station on one side and the Mill Street on the other, but that's not. It goes basically from Glenbrook Road on the south side of Main Street to the pizza and deli. And on the north side, it goes from North Road, the east side of North Road, all the way to the Beale Block, the Old Town Office.
It doesn't go to the Amtrak on either side?
Does not. It, it's in Phase Two it does. So I, I started recalling some of the conversations that the Select Board had with Fussin O'Neal. It was Nicole Fox was the name of the engineer that briefed it. And it was due to cost. That's what it really come down to. And not cost that we couldn't afford it. It was cost of what the, the state would approve. It got to the point where it was going to go beyond probably something they would approve. So by breaking it down into smaller workable amounts, that's how we got $1.2 million. And that, that was the highest grant that's been awarded in this area for, forever. So the, so my question was, how do we get past this? How do we look at the future? And the, and I put it in here, the NEPA process, the environmental part of it, you can't apply for future or more funding until that's completed. And that takes six to nine months to complete. So the faster this gets out there to bid and through the process, then the NEPA will be completed as well. And then we could apply for that Phase Two. Phase Three was, there was another part, lighting was part of this. And I, I thought it was 500, but I believe I looked, it was 700. That was like a third phase to add lighting, but $700,000 to put in lighting.
Lighting similar?
For lighting?
Yeah, lighting.
Similar to what's in the Fairhaven Parker on the East?
Colonial eras.
Seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred thousand dollars. Yep.
So what do we have the money, what do we have the money for now? Just Phase One?
Um, yes, correct. So if you look at, you know, where we're at with what we put in each year for, out of sidewalks, once this phase is completed, it's going to deplete what we have, you know, between the ARPA that you authorized and what's in our coffers now, it's pretty much going to deplete most of that money. So the follow-on phases, again, it's going to take a couple of years. This isn't going to happen again right off the bat, is to save up for the, our share of the other, the second phase. So it'd get, at least it would get it from, South Street was going to happen, that from the university down to Main Street and then that Glenbrook to basically the center of the village, we'll call it, the, the post office, Beale Block and store and stuff. There'll, there'll be sidewalks there. It's going to be from there to the Amtrak Station would be the shortfall right now.
Do we still budget 40K a year for that?
Forty-five.
Forty-five thousand. When I first joined the Board 12 years ago, we were budgeting 40,000 a year. Now we're 45. So that's something this Board needs to take a look at too, too.
Yeah, it's, um, it, it gets the majority of the, of the village area completed, this, this would. It's that second, I guess, that second phase brings it down to the Amtrak. But I don't know how many people walk to the Amtrak Station, but a lot of people do walk to the store, the post office, you know, those areas. So.
Right.
It covers that. And if the lighting was ever put in, if you haven't been down, the reason we talked about it is we, I went down there one night because Dan Minette was the engineer and he was down in this area and we went down there. It is totally dark on the sidewalks. The, the streetlights just don't go back there. And it was like, you know, it'd be nice to have some safe lighting down through that area.
Bob and people would be out and use it.
Yeah. Bob and I were talking about the, sharing some pictures, but you notice that some towns put up things on the poles and stuff like that, like veterans or firefighters, you know? We were talking about that on the light, on the poles because it would, I think it looked better there than hanging on the other poles. But Fairhaven just did it. I don't know if you saw that being passed around?
It did, yeah.
You know, it'd be funded by outside sources. It wouldn't be town money. But anyway, that's, that's like in the future. But, but Phase, Phase One is, is what they're working on right now. Stephanie Burke just wanted to, just to be able to say it's moving forward, which is installed out for so long. Any questions on that one? It's a lot of money. I mean, but there's not, there's not a federal project right now that, when you look at happen, we, we walked away from $300,000 in the Salt Shed Grant because it wouldn't be built into 2028. Wasn't that, it wasn't that we wouldn't like $300,000 and only have to pay 20% of that. It was like, it was going to be 2028.
And it's already done.
And it's done.
Can I jump ahead in your Manager's Report just because I'm so excited that the 6,500 has gone to get the plow and the bed?
Sure.
Has it really?
Yeah.
Yes, finally.
Because you guys bought that before I was on the Board.
Yeah.
So that's pretty good.
But.
We ordered it before you arrived.
Ready to trade it in.
Yeah, see, it's already used up, you know?
Maybe a wet blanket.
I, I'm just excited for that, you know?
It, it's going to get the bed, but the wing right now is, was the question. And I asked, I talked to Jeff about it today and I said, have you got any more word about the wing? And he said, I'm just happy that the bed's going to get put on.
As long as we've got a truck that we can use for something, that's not just sitting under the lean-to there.
So it's, it's there. It's down there. And the, the small-scale bike and ped on South Street, those letters, we got back the, I'm glad we didn't send them out because there was three properties that were wrong. They had been property transfers and we would have sent it to people that no longer own the property. And so I, Nedra and Mary Jo worked it out to make sure we had their correct addresses. So that's, those will get mailed out this week. You know about the grants on Moscow Road? But I did share some information in the, probably more than you wanted in the report. But I talked to Jeff today. There's no way that we can finish those two grants on Moscow Road this year because we've got paving prep they're doing and changing culverts and ditching on East Houberville Road. Then they've got the Brown Farm Road because they've screamed at me that this is unsafe and, you know, this needs to get done. So that has to get done. So I talked to Jeff and there's, there's still another grant that can take care of some of the stuff on Moscow, but it will be in this fiscal year. So that, the, the bills and the reimbursement that we get back will be done in this fiscal year rather than we expend the money this year. The grant drags out past June 30th and then we get our reimbursement in July and it doesn't go against the year we spent the money. And it just, it just starts throwing the revenue and the expenditures off. So we're, we're in agreement today that the Moscow Road, the two grants that, the $44,000 will be used after one July of next year. But they are going to pick the segments like, because we bought that hammer. So they're going to pick the segments that, that have that ledge and stuff in it and they'll get that stuff done this year.
That road's not horrible anyway.
Let's see. Um, the, the grant for the, the trestle, we've been all over the place with this thing. It's been so many years. We finally just said, Jeff and I were talking after he talked to the state and we're like, you know what? Let's just get this thing out to bid. And if they run, if they're doing excavation and they run into an issue, it's not our structure, it's the state's. So they got to deal with it. Which, but the, the downside is, oh, we're going to have to shut down South Street at the trestle if that ever happens. I'm not sure if it's going to. So we're like, let's just get this thing rolling because bad news isn't going to get better with time. So we're going to get that bid put back out there.
How many years have we been talking about that?
It happened in 2019 is when this?
Say at least five years.
Well, the grants are, were messed around, so, but the, the actual damage was done in April of 2019. Crystal Heights, I, I listened to the tape from last meeting. The Turners, they had, they had already spoken with, with Brad, I mean, Brandon?
Crystal Haven, you mean?
Yeah. What's that?
Crystal Haven, not Crystal Heights.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant Crystal Haven. So there was already discussion going on, but the letters went out, now they're, they're reaching out to Hillary and they'll get a, a meeting scheduled up there to see if they can get the, those that, where these treatment areas are going to go, the permission to be able to do so. And anybody else will weigh in on anything. But the big thing is, can they put the treatment areas in with permission from the landowners? That's going to be the hurdle.
All of that is dependent on being on private property.
Yeah, exactly. And so if they say no, then we're kind of look at, we're, we're looking at smaller mitigation measures, but we still have to deal with, with the issue of the broken pipe underneath Kern's property. That's going to be.
Really shouldn't, or can't really do anything about that until the whole plan is in place.
No, unfortunately, no.
We don't even know for sure how big the pipe's got to be.
At least the depth of it too. So I was given a name of a guy from Vermont Rural Water. I'm on page seven under wastewater collection system. Because I know that the Board wants to, or the Board of Sewer Commissioners want to have some assessment of our infrastructure, as do I. So I, this week, when, now Russ is back from vacation, I was on vacation the week prior, that we'll make some phone calls to this guy and get some guidance on who to contact, who's the best person. Because we, we dealt with Vermont Green, or Green Mountain Pipeline. They got bought out by a bigger company now and they're just, they're not taking our calls, they're not calling us back. They're the ones that looked at the pipe on Route 30 to like use that new system, align it. But now, now they're just playing radio listening side. They're not answering us. So we got to find somebody else, move on with this and get the, the infrastructure and the pump stations assessed and put in brightly so we kind of know money-wise what we're dealing with, timelines, when it might need to be replaced, that kind of stuff. Paving, that's not going to happen most likely now to the end of August, just scheduling wise. But they still have some culverts to put in. Jeff sent me a picture of a load of culverts because we, they, you guys approved it last meeting and you got, we got a load of culverts that came in. So we'll have the means to do so now. There's nothing really down for, like I would say, that's repair-wise, that, you know, besides the wood chipper. And I talked to Jeff again today and Champlain Valley had had it and they looked at it and they had to send something out. They thought maybe there was a cracked cylinder or sleeve or something, I don't, I didn't see anything in writing. I was just listening to what he was saying. Obviously not too well. But it's, it needs another, it needs something to be diagnosed by somebody else at this point. So it's still down, you know, about the 2,500. The tandem, we're waiting on the, the certificate of origin or title so we can register it. So that's what we've been battling with, with the bank to get that stuff processed so that we have that to register it before winter. But not just for winter, so that they can start driving it on the road and training with it.
Did they send that summer shoot?
They did not. And what, the, the mechanic, or the sales rep basically told them what they needed to do and Evan said, I'm not doing that. He goes, I can just weld stuff myself. What they had to do to this thing, Evan's like, this is, this is ridiculous. So he said, I can do something myself. And then the plow, Jeff was following up to see if they would swap out the front frame and get a 10-foot plow, I guess, rather than 11-foot plow. And I think the, the laughter is, you could hear it from New Hampshire. So I don't, I don't know if we made any headway on that one yet. They had to order some coupler pins for the, for the bucket, for the, these new Craig buckets. They didn't come with it. It was $900 for the damn pins. But it kind of defeated the purpose of having quick detached buckets without the pins. Then I got the.
Wow, it's really only six inches longer.
Yeah.
Because, you know, because it's back at a 45-degree angle. So the foot only equates to six extra inches.
Yeah. They were dealing with, after you spoke with them and Jeff, Evan and Jeff were talking about it and he said that, they talked to Mike at HP Fairfield and it didn't sound like this was something that they wanted to deal with. Just a public thank you to Lee Jamison and the students from Upper Bound at Castleton at the university for getting the dugouts taken care of at Dewey Field. And Lee built the new dugouts down at Hydeville and rehabbed some stuff at Dewey. But they look nice.
It looks great. I went down, looked at them.
And that was all, so what I'm doing is, I'm, he's not an employee. It's hard to, it's easier to give out gift cards. I can do that easy. So I've got gift cards for Doc Dirksen, for Cindy L. from the fire department because she does all of the emergency management postings and manning the shelter and all that. And she's been doing it for four, three, four years now, is getting them some gift cards and just to be able to say thank you, give something. Yeah. T-Ball Field, you see it's overgrown again. I was down there the other day and we got the stump out of there and that tree, that tree down the stump out. But the longer that we wait to get the material in there, it's just going to, we're going to keep having to clear that thing out. But just want to get that done and behind us as well. But I can't pull Jeff off highway.
It's only so much time.
I know. And I'm, look, I can't pull them off highway projects to do that.
No.
But we've got some volunteers, Graham Trudeau being one of them. And we just got to get the material there so that he can do his part. And so it's pulling drivers and dump trucks to pull 18 loads of stuff from Brown's to the T-Ball Field.
If we had that big dump truck going, it wouldn't be 18.
Well, it's tandem loads, so 18 tandem loads, according to Charlie. Salt Shed, you've seen that. Brad Kendall and Fabian, from Fabian's and Tim Rice from Wilkes have been talking about timing and what needs to get done up there. They're going to actually meet up there so that, that thing will be prepped just before it gets paved. it gets paved. I'd like to thank the fire department, um, 320 hours of personnel time up there on that wildland fire off Scotch Hill Road. And Dick was up there helping.
One day I was up there.
But Heath and his crew, they did some, there was some rough work up in there, but that you, thank you for the UTV. I know that they'll say that, um, uh, between cart and people and equipment and water, uh, a lot of, a lot of time spent up there. So thank you to them for, they don't get paid to do it.
Could have been a lot worse than it was too.
Yeah.
The town doesn't have any property up there anymore, do they?
Not up there, no.
On the news, it said it bordered the Castleton Town Forest.
I know, I was like, I didn't, we don't have town forests up there, do we?
The stuff they sold to Bryce.
Yeah, Bryce Taylor. Probably a decade ago. It says Castleton Town Forest on the map, on Google Maps. That's where they got that from. But we sold that to Bryce Taylor, uh, 10 years ago anyways.
And they threw up part of Coon Hill Road and all that stuff, so.
Right, the Coon, that was, the town manager gave up Coon Hill Road and once that was done, our, the town forest was landlocked. Couldn't do anything.
Sold it to Bryce Taylor.
Yeah.
It was a reasonably good, good equitable deal on that.
Um, town, speaking of town forests, Andy Vermile had somebody from Slate Valley Trails that was going to meet him up there while I was on vacation to walk that town property, the town forest land up behind, uh, Crystal Meadows, um, just to scope it out to see if it was anything that would be worth, um, putting in biking, biking, hiking trails. I haven't talked to Andy since I got back, but they were going to walk up there because they said if they can't get five miles of trails, then it's really probably not worth it for them, um, for biking anyway. But, uh, so I'm curious to see what he has to say, but they were going to look at that. There was a grant out there and, um, again, without, if they can't fit the amount of trails in there that they say, Andy said five miles for that, that acre of land, it's almost 60 acres, that, um, it wouldn't be worth it. So, um, hit, really to see what he has to say because if he says we can get five miles in there or 4.75 miles that we might be able to-
I'll bet they could.
Crystal even common area dock space, oh my God. So when we started looking at sending letters out to people, found a box of things that the property transfers that happened for that properties that have the deeded access to that common area and in turn have these dock space agreements, haven't been updated in probably three years. So Megan's going through those now to update those so that we at least have, when we send a letter out, it's going to the proper person, the applicable or, rather than someone that says, I haven't had that property for three years. And then we say, well, get your old dock off that then. And the grievances, so the, the grievances were, have been finalized and now Nedra's scheduling stuff for the Board of Civil Authority hearings. So that will be done at the village school, uh, I mean, the rec center and we'll, um, take them as they come, I guess. Thanks, thanks for your time and barring your questions. Bob's still on, he hasn't said anything.
Still muted?
Yes, still muted.
I have no questions.
None.
I have three purchase orders out of five. I don't know where the other two are.
Hey, Bob.
I don't know where the other two are. Oh, wait a minute, here they are.
I didn't hear it, but they, they made a motion passed, uh, you're now on the planning commission.
Want these? Let me see what-
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
I heard Mary Lee got on, I didn't hear mine.
Yeah, you're both on. Oh my God.
Oh, great.
Can you imagine that?
You guys can carpool.
Yeah, yeah. I was wondering who was behind that. Those are yours.
You agree?
Yes.
I don't know why I have this yellow folder.
What's that? Oh, Penny, Penny, Penny. Penny left it in there, I don't know. I just grabbed them all.
They're, they're, they're in the air window.
What are you spending money on now?
All right, we ready?
Yes, we are.
Ready.
Make a motion to approve purchase order number 054255 to BCI Construction for 36 sheets of plywood for the Salt Shed interior plus labor for the sum of $2,900.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Would make a motion to approve purchase order number 054257 to A1 Sewer and Drain to clean the Catch Basins for the sum of $3,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to approve purchase order number 054259 to Lane Enterprises for five culverts with nuts, bolts and fish baffles for the sum of $27,611 and 76 cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to approve purchase order number 054764 to MS Martin Enterprises for one in-car radar unit for the sum of $2,414.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Would make a motion to approve purchase order number 054346 to the US Fire Services for fire hose testing for the sum of $3,531 and 60 cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve purchase order number 054260 to M&amp;T Bank and that appears to be the first payment on the tandem lease for $53,476 and 60 cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ready for warrants, Steve?
Round and roll, keep rolling.
Make a motion to approve warrant number 0728R for the sum of $53,776, 60 cents. Warrant number 0724 for the sum of $56,122 and 17 cents. Warrant number 0728 for the sum of $79,864 and 43 cents. Warrant number 0728F for the sum of $3,531 and 60 cents. Warrant number 0717P for the sum of $28,175 and 28 cents. And warrant number 0724P for the sum of $25,988 and 93 cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, shit.
I bet.
Is that COVID?
Let's hope so. That seems like the easiest disease we have now.
Yeah.
Did you count them, Mark?
Pardon me?
Did you count them?
No, I didn't.
I just signed until there weren't any more.
You getting cold?
So let's start with slick word comments. Mary Lee, anything?
Yes. I'd like to see us put an all-out bulletin or whatever you want to call it to fill all our vacant positions, whether it's DRB or CIA or whatever else we might have that are not filled.
Say the two most urgent are planning commission and DRB at this point.
Would you like to be on the DRB?
No.
You're already on the planning commission.
Then I could approve it here. No, approach it, approve it and then say, yeah, it's all right.
See, there you go. You got it.
Anything else you want me on too while you're at it?
Milton County Saw Waste District.
Yeah, why not?
Everyone's trying to get rid of that one.
I don't have anything this week that I didn't cover already.
Mark?
I don't either.
Bob, you got anything?
I just have a quick question for, for anybody on the board there. What on the, on the coin drops, is there starting hours and ending hours? How does the town handle that?
I don't recall what's in the policy.
Coin drop, I don't have the policy in front of me, so.
The policy, the, usually they have to check in with the police at the beginning to let them know when they're setting up. I don't know about the end. I don't remember what's in the policy off the top of my head.
I don't recall what's in the policy, Rob, but, or Bob, you can check with Christine tomorrow if you have time, or I don't know if the policy is available online, if you could check on the internet.
Sure, sure, I'll check with somebody. I think that maybe maybe Mike can do lots of that.
I don't, sorry.
I don't have that either, Bob.
Okay. That's all good.
I'm looking it up right now.
Um, I have, I have nothing, so let's move on to action items. I don't have a lot tonight. The only thing I have is that, uh, I need to follow up with Jeff Davison so we can, uh, create a plan for the Green Mountain Church of Christ and coordinate with Wilk.
And you got Mary Lee's UDR stuff?
Which is right here.
Yeah, I'll make a copy of that while we wait.
I just wrote it up for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will go through this tomorrow morning. I'm not going to do it tonight. Then I'll get back with Karen and we'll, and we'll come up with a plan, hopefully.
Just be glad that there's only six.
Hey, Bob?
Yeah?
No coin drop will be allowed any earlier than 9:00 AM or no later than 4:00 PM.
9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, okay?
Mr. Chairman, um, there was something that got brought up last week, um, that was, the last meeting I wasn't here, um, regards to the university. Um, so I, I did hear that you made that comment about following up with the university. So, um, I talked to my wife who works for the university and, um, I'm waiting, she's going to give me the name of a financial person. I'm going to do a public records request, um, to get the financials on what they're paying agencies so I know that'll be legit, um, versus somebody going, I think that we did that. So I'll just, I'll do it through a public records request and then I'll, they'll have to give me the documentation too. I don't know for each campus what they, get covered by EMS, fire and police.
Great, that's a great idea.
Because the university, even though he did, he did resign, but he hasn't, it's a year from now.
Oh.
He's staying on so their search community can find a replacement, but he never replied to me, so.
Good, since he already quit and he can just give us some money and it won't really affect him in the future.
It's become okay that somebody in a position like that could not reply.
And we, we sent it to, I, I verified that it was the, because his office is at the Randolph campus, that it was correct and nobody ever replied. And I sent him an email too, so it wasn't like he missed the letter.
Right.
All right, so we're going to move on. Executive session for-
Personnel.
Personnel, so.